Recognize that in the next ten years, we're going to be losing all these administrators in the state of Nebraska, so principals go back and find teachers that you believe have that aptitude to lead at that level. And I remember he came to me and he said, Darren, you need to get your administrator's certificate. And I knew I wanted to get my masters because I wanted to move over across the pay scale, so I thought, well, let's do that. And so my years in Fairbury, I was working at Wayne and UNL to get my administrative degree. And the year that I moved to Seward was the year I earned my administrative degree. So I taught five years with that administrative degree, but still was very interested in teaching, very satisfied in teaching and coaching. And then I started to get that feeling about the next level of leadership in education. So in 2002, I started to look a little more seriously about an administrative position. That opportunity opened up at St. Francis Catholic School in Humphrey, which was just really an awesome experience, a great fit. You know, my Catholic faith and education. I was there for eight years, that's when my kids went to school, my older kids went to school. And in my years there, I, you know, I'm very cognizant of the fact that I wasn't earning retirement benefits. So, you know, I knew that I would maybe one day transition back to public education administration. And so in 2010, I actually took a teaching position out in Lexington, Lexington Middle School. And so I used that avenue to move back into public education. I was there one year and then became the principal at the middle school in Central City, was there before. My year in Lex is when I started to think, well, what's the next level of leadership in education? And you'd be able to find people certainly back in my past that would say, you know, I know I've heard Darren say, I never want to be a principal, boy, what a hassle. Well, you would also probably be able to find people say, I know I heard Darren say, I'd never want to be a superintendent, you know, what a mess that would be. So you could find people certainly in my past to say those things, but we evolve and we grow and we mature. So, you know, the next level of leadership naturally was a position of superintendent. So I started to kind of look at that a couple of years ago, had several interviews and was not invited by a few schools that I went and visited, and I understand that and respect that. But last year, Pawnee City, it gave me an opportunity to start my career as a school superintendent. And that's been a terrific experience, but I certainly couldn't pass up the opportunity to express an interest in this position. And for a variety of reasons, I'm very interested in Plankton. I think, you know, the obvious ones are that closer to my family, my kids are both going to be at Wayne State, my older kids will both be at Wayne State next year. I have a strong connection with Wayne State as an adjunct faculty professor. And my youngest goes and goes over to public schools, is a second grader. And so my patron will grow up in Norfolk where her mom is a teacher. And so that's just very necessary for me to be closer to my family. Still kind of like my folks, you know, like to be around them, you know, help them out a little bit. For the first time in forty years, Dad's sidewalks weren't scooped from the snow. And so, you know, that would be good, that would be all right. And even though I've been away from Plankton really for the better part of thirty years, you know, I think I still know the community a little bit, know some of the folks, met a few at a couple of the coffee shops this morning. You know, and I think I owe this community and this school because it didn't get the best that I had back in the seventies and eighties. I took way more than I gave. And so, and I'm looking for a destination position. I'm ready to finish my career. And at one school, the average superintendent tenure in Nebraska is just over five years, and I have about fifteen years left in my career, and I'm not interested in a few more moves. I don't think my wife is interested in a few more moves as well. This is my wife Rhonda, and she's a kindergarten teacher in Central City. That's where we met, and I've been teaching kindergarten there for fifteen years. So here I am, very happy to be here, very excited about the opportunity and certainly trust and respect how difficult and yet how important this process is and this decision will be for you.
I'll try to stay down to number three. I think you got answer number two.
Yes. I'll try to be more brief.
What do you feel that your, what your strengths and weaknesses are as a superintendent?
Leadership. Leadership. Being a superintendent is really about leadership. And there's, you know, lots of different kinds of leaders, but essentially, and that's what I know I wasn't as good at as I should have been when I was here, growing up in here as a student. I was a leader, I just wasn't as good a one as I could or should have been. And that leadership has obviously evolved throughout the course of my career. Military was an exceptional experience for me in terms of leading people and instilling people with hope and confidence, with positive energy, which is, which is very necessary. I mean, kids are going to have energy and they're going to bring their own kind of energy to a school environment. And if your staff, if your faculty don't have the amount of energy that kids are going to bring, well, then it's going to be tough and, you know, discouragement can settle in and folks can get kind of worn down. So they need energy from the top. And so I exude that, it's natural for me, it's easy for me. So leadership, I believe that the position of superintendent is essentially about leadership. Weaknesses, I'm very ambitious. I like to get things done, I like to move, you know, kind of fast, and I know the position of superintendent is quite a bit different than the position of principal with that regard. I need to be steady. And my ambitions and my desire to get things done and to move forward at a quick pace, I sometimes need to slow down. And, you know, certainly be thoughtful, be reflective, be a good communicator, be a good listener. So those things I know are evolving, certainly as I've been a superintendent for this school.
List some of your accomplishments as a administrator.
Well, you know, Steve, I think, you know, as a Catholic school administrator, a lot of things are the same, a few things are different. But as a Catholic school administrator, I really enjoyed expressing, being able to express, you know, even my faith and having to be expected. And certainly received, you know, a tremendous amount of support when I was a principal for eight years at Catholic school. Stakeholders at St. Francis, you know, nominated me for some recognition. And my last year at St. Francis, I was honored as a principal of the year for the Archdiocese of Omaha, for the Catholic schools of Archdiocese of Omaha. So that's certainly something I share with everybody, you know, our staff, our entire team. You know, in the middle school at Seward, we were at Central City, we certainly tried to focus on student recognition and have a team of teachers who needed to try to come up with something new and fresh every year to recognize, you know, our students for achievement. Set expectations, here's what we want to see, and then here's how we're going to try to recognize that. We had the advantage of the middle school in Central City, the gym in our building was actually our high school activity gym, it was a performance gym, so a lot of traffic into the middle school, I was very, very well aware of that, that a tremendous amount of people would come through our commons. And so I was always quite busy with making sure that we had displays of student recognition, things that we were trying to do. I do that naturally, anytime I visit a school, I'm very aware and I look around and I see what schools do, because we borrow ideas from other folks. And so we did some things with L to J, and actually our school is recognized in Lee Jenkins' latest book as being kind of at the forefront of recognizing and acknowledging and encouraging students. And so that was a lot of fun, and a lot of people, you know, appreciated that, parents certainly do, grandparents certainly do. Having things routinely in the newspaper, talking with people, having them hear from you on the things you're doing. So just try to be very, very busy with that. I've carried a lot of those things over to Pawnee City. We recognize some core values. I had our team identify what are our core values, what are the things that we model, what are the things we expect of our kids. We created T-shirts. And so our colors are red and black, we created black T-shirts with red print, so we call them our black shirts, and we wanted kids to earn their black shirts. I brought in Duane Adams' former Husker black shirt to come in and just as motivational speaker, talk with our kids about character and good choices and those things. And now we use a Google spreadsheet for all of our teachers, and when they recognize a kid, identify a student who's consistently and persistently demonstrating some of the values we have in this black shirt, they nominate a student, a couple of other teachers have to agree, and then the principal arrives, we hang their black shirt in their locker for them to find it, just like a Husker would find their black shirt in their locker. So they show up and their black shirt's hanging. High school kids thought it was a little hokey at first, but that's all right, the elementary kids love to show up and they find a black shirt on their desk, you know. So that's been, you know, something kind of fun. We started a brag sheet. So every month, teachers are contributing to our Pawnee City Public Schools brag sheet, just in generalities of great things that our kids. We have to tell our story, okay? We have to tell our story in the community, and if we don't tell it, somebody else will tell it, and probably tell it inaccurately, okay? Or it's a little more natural to kind of tell the stuff that's maybe not going so well. So we have a brag sheet every month, and at the end of the month, I take that thing and I put it on a nice little letterhead with Pawnee City Indians watermark and create about thirty copies, I give them to the kids in a particular group, and they go out in the community and they distribute these in the community. So these are posted on windows and bulletin boards and the coffee shops and the grocery store and the subway, just to tell a positive story. You know, it's not really, it's not really a difficult thing to do, but a very, very necessary thing to do. And that's an entire team effort, but something that's, that's working well.
I think you've already done the next, I'm going to read it to you, but I think you've already been doing this, you have several good candidates helping convince us that you are the person for the job, and I think you've been doing that already.
Nobody, nobody, I can't imagine any other candidate is indebted to Plankton like I. I can't imagine that any other candidate can come in and can have momentum on day Because as a school district, I think, you know, for a teacher, certainly a principal and absolutely a superintendent, initially, you need to become more like them, okay, before they become more like you. Okay, and that's going to happen, you're going to want somebody to come in and make a difference, okay? But you can't come in on day one and say, okay, I'm here and this is what I'm bringing and this is who I am and this is the way we're going to roll. That's not going to work, you can't do that. First thing that a leader needs to do is become more like the organization in which they lead, because there are some things that, this is just who we are, this is just who we are, okay? But you expect to become somebody new to a certain degree, okay? I'm already more like you than any other candidate can be, okay? So I'll have momentum on day one.
Excuse me, you can't work overtime. What do you like to do for recreation and how do you relax, do you get up frustrated? Good question.
Well, I enjoy mowing the lawn, but Bob will probably want to do that for me. Being outdoors, you know, landscaping, taking care of the property. I used to play a little more golf than I do now, seemed to have more time to play golf when I was a teacher than I do as an administrator. You know, I enjoy working out, I know that wellness is very important. Folks can't come and be their best and bring their best if they're not healthy. So I try to stay healthy. Not a whole, just, you know, being with family, being with my kids, chasing my kids, my daughter dragging me to water parks, love that, so, yeah.
Can you find a role for the board and the role of superintendent?
We have different responsibilities. You tell me, you know, you're kind of responsible for the what, I'm a little more responsible for the how. Okay, we have lanes, and we kind of need to stay in our lanes, okay? But if I don't, you need to be very specific with, okay, what your expectations are of me, and then, and then let me do it. Expect me to do it and let me do it, and if I'm doing it, stay out of my lane, right? Because that's where, you know, things can kind of break down, I think, as a team, okay? Six members, but you're one, but you're one group, you're one organization, not six different organizations, okay? And I know I have responsibility to lead to help you do that, okay? But I believe that we have lanes of responsibility and we should stay in our lanes, and if there's something that you feel, Darren, you're not taking care of this in your lane, rather than coming into my lane, visit with me, help me to get it the way you expect, that, that will project a, you know, a team approach to our stakeholders, to our teachers who absolutely, you know, need to see that, that we're working as a team. But then we just, we just need very fluid levels of communication.
What is your philosophy as a superintendent?
Well, somebody can do better than me than I'm going to want them to do it, I'm going to expect them to do it. And that's very important, and that can maybe be a weakness of mine. I mean, I, I'm kind of a, I can be a take charge, you know, kind of guy, and just, you know, I want to get it done. I don't automatically think that my way is the best way, but I know that we've, we've got, you know, a tremendous group of educated folks with a lot of expertise and certainly greater expertise in areas that I would have. So if I'm, if I'm good at recognizing that, what everybody can contribute, and if I have faith and trust and I communicate well, then absolutely let's put the best person on the job. And I know that you don't expect that the superintendent is the best at everything that needs to get done. A little bit like the conductor of an orchestra, to be honest with you, the conductor of an orchestra can't play the flute better than the people in the flute section. I got to count on them to be able to play those instruments, but I have a responsibility to bring us all together. So that's good, that could be a challenge for me, you know, to be honest with you, to delegate authority. It takes a little bit of time to get to know your team and what everybody can bring.
This kind of goes along with that question, I guess, maybe, how do you maintain accountability?
Well, being visible, I think is the best and simplest way. Folks will do what they're supposed to do if the boss is around, or could be around at any, at any time. And I certainly hope, you know, accountability can be kind of a tough thing. Making sure folks are fulfilling their responsibilities. I hate to think that I need to be watched by you, or that the principal or the teachers need to be watched by their administrator, I don't, I don't think that's, that's necessary. However, when you're visible, you know what's going on. When you're up and down the hall, you learn a whole heck of a lot by just walking up and down the hall, just being visible, being, you know, part of, part of conversations. And I'm not out there, you know, fishing for information, I'm just, I just have my hand on the pulse of what's going on in the school. And occasionally, when you need to have gentle reminders, and that's always the first way you go about it, unless it's something that's bad for kids, unless it's something that's hurting kids, that's just gentle reminders, and nine times out of ten, that's also my needs, including myself.
How would you work with your friends, Paul?
Oh, boy.
Sounds like you guys are a lot.
Hey, come on, huh? Now, you guys know Patty and I have known each other for thirty years. It's been that long, Patty, it's been that long. You know, we came to Wayne State together, and we were, we were friends in our undergrad, and there's kind of always been a little bit of a friendly competition, because there are some things that we have in common, and I think that can be, that can work to your advantage. But we've kind of followed each other's careers, we stayed in touch, I think, and a lot of administrators do that, you have a network of folks that really are kind of your go-to people, you know, to talk about issues and talk about situations, because schools face a lot of the same situations, as you know. But the most important thing is that people know that we're, that we talk daily, she's aware of what I'm thinking and where I'm going and what I'm doing and what my vision is and vice versa. You know, and certainly, you know, you have confidence in your, in your principal, I mean, there, you know, their role is certainly, and I recognize this a lot more now as a superintendent, and of course, I'm still a principal, I am elementary principal in Pawnee City. So just, most important thing is that we work together and that we project that without exception to our staff, so they know that the superintendent and principal are lock step with moving forward on our mission and our vision.
So along with that, what are main things that you're interested in doing?
Visibility, bottom line, visibility, out and about, and that can be a tough thing. There are times where, by gosh, I just, I've got, there are times where you have to be at your desk and shut the door. But that's, that's not the part of administration that any administrator should be able to work. I had to do that quite a bit the past several weeks since our study, you know, at Pawnee City, so I've had to just study, study, study. And if you don't like that part, a principal even more so, even more so needs to be visible. And certainly, and be in and out of classrooms, not so much, and that's more for the benefit of the students, more for the benefit of the students. The students need to see and understand that the principal is interested in and cares about what's going on in their lives and in their experience here, okay? And so that's what I enjoy as a principal, is walking in and around through classrooms and looking over kids' shoulders and asking what they're learning and what book they're reading, or the lowest ones, what book they're reading for AR and what their, what their level is, and that's important to kids. So principals obviously needs to be, you know, stay up on, in the NDE stuff and really understand and know their responsibilities, but mainly to be a strong advocate for our teachers, very, very visible, and model that relationship building that we need to have with kids.
Have you been, had a chance to be involved with this, the teacher negotiation process? You know, anywhere to each field as a superintendent's role and job?
Layers on between the two, certainly. You know, I think that, that process is certainly very vital when it comes to trust between the administrative team, between the board essentially, and your certified staff. That process is, is very important, and I know, I, you know, I hear, you know, just tough stories from superintendent's and from new superintendent's. We have a network of new superintendent's that I meet with several times so far this year, and to hear about their experiences with certain things in one of them, negotiations with the teachers. Our process is just, you know, and I can't take any, I don't, I don't believe that I can take any credit for it, I think a lot of it is, well, what's been done in the past? If there's an adversarial relationship in the past, it can be difficult for folks to kind of let go of that and think, well, we ought to, let's go to battle. It might just be a mindset in some school districts, it's time to go to battle for negotiations. Superintendent needs to be an information provider, certainly to the board, okay, here's what this will do to our budget. But also, I think you can be an advocate for teachers in that role. And that's a, that's a balance, just a difficult, can be, I think, a difficult balance, but if you have those trusting relationships, which, you know, takes a little bit of time to establish, you know, I believe it can be done, but really a liaison between the two.
Are you familiar with the financial accounting system of budgets and budgeting?
Okay, obviously, you know, my budgeting experience is similar to that. You know, as far as a public school superintendent position goes, had to budget for years as a principal. And well, at, at St. Francis, and that would be different, I understand, we don't have a superintendent in Catholic schools, so I was essentially, you know, in terms of leadership for all those things, you know, superintendent type position, so, you know, had to budget, but not near with the level of the complicated system that Nebraska, you know, puts us through. So I had to build a network and build one fast, and I knew that coming in, and CIC does a great job of helping new superintendent's, and my mentor is the business manager at Beatrice Public Schools, and I met with him and talked with him numerous times this year. Also have some other go-to people that I have a connection with. So again, I took all of our things and went right down to NDE and sat at the desk next to Janice Arret, you know, last fall, and met with her several times and just showed her our things and helped her, you know, talk me through. And we got there, we built a budget, and we're living within those means this year. State aid's coming in at forty-one percent less next year than it was this year, and that, in one year, we're going to take a bigger hit in state aid than we did in the previous five years combined, and so right now, there will be some very difficult decisions that are going to need to be made because, you know, the, just to avoid, you know, personnel, to avoid making those decisions that affect personnel directly. So it's just, it's essentially about networking and studying, okay? Talked to experienced superintendent's, you never get it, you never get the TOSA formula, and I know it's not an issue here, it's a non-equalized district, maybe you have two-hundred-and-twenty-nine total dollars in state aid if you're going to be coming, I don't know what we're going to do with that. I wish they could let you just go party with it. Two-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, that's probably not a smaller figure for any of the school districts now. So there's, there's some advantage certainly to being a non-equalized district, I think, but, so it's, it, you know, that'd be something you grow and you learn about for your entire career. Even when I talk about the TOSA formula and the state aid, you know, funding mechanism with the folks that are supposed to know it best, they can't explain it, they can't really explain it, and I think that's by design. I don't think they want to try to explain this is how it works, because every district is different, obviously, and so the funding formula is, is unique to every district. Very complicated, but you just study, you talk to people, seek support, and you get through.
How does a superintendent and a board of education, your first grade teacher?
Well, I think, you know, certainly by, you know, expecting it, providing the necessary resources and support, you know, said, we expect you to be a great teacher, you know, which, which we do, but then we have a responsibility as an administrative team to say, this is what we believe great teaching looks like, this is what we believe great teaching sounds like. I've been a strong advocate for Marzano's instructional strategies, I've been through the Marzano Academy a few years, and I'm taking a team, Pawnee City teachers through the Marzano Academy, to just, primarily to develop a common language of instruction, because we can't be doing, you know, every teacher is individual and we need them to bring that individuality to their classroom, certainly. But there has to be something that kids recognize from classroom to classroom, that some things are done the same, year to year, classroom to classroom, content area to content area, there's somewhat, there's some consistency in the language that we use when we talk about instruction, when we talk about teaching and learning, the things that we see, the expectations that we have. So we have a responsibility as administrative team to communicate with teachers and to have a basic set of expectations. These are the things, this is what good instruction looks like and sounds like at Plankton Public Schools. And then provide the support, encouragement, and the resources to help them to be able to do that. No doubt that we're going to hire people that can do that, we're not going to hire somebody who can't pull it off, because it's not rocket science, but it takes commitment, it takes effort every day to be a great teacher, and great teachers know that. And it's, it's tough work, when done well, it's about the toughest job in the world, when done well.
What do you feel the most important, or the first step of a superintendent, if you were to come here, what would be your first steps? And I know we've kind of covered this.
Come in and be, and be visible, immediately, come in and meet the folks that I need to meet, start building that relationship out with folks. You know, I've, I've identified, you know, kind of the first hundred days, okay? Who do I go see, what do I do in my first hundred days? What do I need to study? And of course, that, that hundred days doesn't start on July one, it starts the day you would invite me to be your superintendent, okay? What do I need to study about our district, what do I need to know? So that's, but primarily visibility, and that's not just initially, I mean, I believe that's, that's certainly, you know, ongoing.
What communication methods would you use between the school and the community that would help establish good community?
Face-to-face communication, again, that visibility. You, Steve, being where- Uh, face-to-face communication, uh, again, that visibility, uh, you see, being where folks are, which primarily school activities, I mean, that's when they show up. Uh, and, and not that, okay, let's go off in the corner and have a conversation about budget so much, um, but just knowing that I'm approachable, that you can, that we can have a conversation, a casual conversation, that's gonna make it a whole lot easier when we need to have, you know, a more specific, maybe a more difficult conversation. So communication is, is primarily visibility, and a faithful monthly newsletter writer, since I've been a principal, I, I have editorials in the local paper on at least a monthly basis, and that can be on a variety of things, I mean, whether that's, you know, internet safety, uh, or, you know, or communicating with folks, you know, we brought, we brought people to come in and talk to your kids about this, okay? So, ask them about it, essentially, ask them about it, okay? Or just, you know, a, a, a variety of things, I have from Mr. Arnold's desk editorial in the Ponte City paper, uh, in Central City, once a month, every principal had a week, so Central City Middle School, principal, you know, Darren Arnold's call. So that's very important, you know? Newsletters that we send home, you know, are read by less than half the people you send them to, we need to be, you know, aware of that, doesn't mean you don't do it, uh, but still very important to do. Here's my cellphone number, folks. Here, here's my personal cellphone, text or call, I don't have any problem with that. I understand you need to be available to folks. Um, and when they know that, they appreciate that, they respect that. And communicating with teachers, uh, you know, right now, I, I, I had a difficult conversation with our teachers just on Friday before I left, um, to let them know about, you know, our, our, our state aid reduction, okay? Because they've been hearing the things, you know, they hear things, but they don't automatically naturally come walk over to the superintendent's office during the planning period, uh, and they get anxious and they get nervous. And, uh, so, I, I, you know, and, and unpleasant, uh, an unpleasant certainty is, is many times easier to deal with than an uncertainty. And there was uncertainty, and so I had to stand before them and say, you know, okay, folks, this is gonna be tough, and I need you to help me decide where on the periphery, okay, of our target, because the bullseye is teaching and learning. Where on the periphery can we find a couple hundred thousand dollars? Which isn't a tremendously high percentage of our budget, but still it needs to be done. But again, you know, Steve, it comes down to just being invisible, just being available to folks, being a good listener.
How is school approved?
A constantly changing. Um, I, I don't think folks resist change, they resist being changed. Folks are part of the process, when there's faith and trust, and they're part of the process, because most, most of the change that happens in schools needs to happen, you know, you need your teachers to, you know, to, to kind of take the lead, uh, you know, on that. But schools improve by changing, that's kind of how we go about that, it's a huge responsibility of us and the district team to make sure we go about that directly.
How are you in decision-making?
Try to be diplomatic, but in the end decisive. If, if folks think you're wishy-washy, or if you portray a sense of wishy-washing us, there's a lack of confidence right there, then are we really gonna be all in? Are we really gonna embrace this decision? Probably not. Occasionally, you're gonna be decisively wrong. But I think folks, and, and, you know, I don't mind that, because it gives me an opportunity to apologize. And, I mean, when you do that, you gain a tremendous amount of clout, I think, and respect, when you acknowledge, man, I screwed this one up, okay? And I think I know why, I think I know how I got to that point and screwed it up, and now I know how I, you know, I can avoid that in the future. But that's, you know, that's gonna happen, that's reality. But need to be confident and decisive when you make that decision.
In the past, you, you probably heard that, I believe, that you talked about co-op things, five years ago.
Heard, heard about that.
Do you have any experience with co-op with other schools and sharing, sharing personalities?
Not a whole lot, Mike, we did as a, as, you know, at, at St. Francis, the public school is literally right across the street, uh, and so we did share, our kids would go there for some IT and for some ag, their kids would come to us for some art and Spanish. We did that, that was set up before I got there, I certainly can't take credit for that, but, uh, that was a good arrangement, that worked, that was easy. Junior high football was not. So I, I, I know it's, and, and of course, the state, uh, rewards schools a little bit for co-op, finding ways to reduce, you know, your, your, your spending and your dispersments, which might reduce property tax valuing, that's a whole discussion. So, not, not a, not a whole lot of experience with that at Central City, we didn't have that, that need to do that at Ponte City, we do. And there were some serious discussions with some friends down the road in Lewiston, uh, we co-op wrestling with HTRS, all of that was set up before I got there, okay? We need to do some more things, we need to have some of those conversations, the geography's a little tougher though, uh, to, to do some of that, that co-op. So, you know, I, I, I know that, that we've had lots of discussions here about that, and I know that it's necessary to do. I know that it's necessary to do. I would not come in and say, by God, we can, we, we don't need to do any of that, we can stay Plainview Pirates forever. That's not reality. But I also know and recognize that, how important it is to preserve our legacy. And, and yet, help us to become somebody new, who we're gonna be forever. And I do think that I, I would hope that I would be the best candidate to help preserve our legacy.
What is your ideal size of school to pursue?
About three-hundred-and-six students, K-12. Well, you know what, I, I do know that as a superintendent, I mean, I can never become disconnected from kids, and so, I, you know, you get a whole lot, like, once you get into a, a, a larger C or a B school district, your superintendent is maybe a building across town, okay? What a drag that would be. I need to be able to walk out of my office and be in the hallway where kids are. You'd be able to find dozens and dozens of people that would say, I've, you know, I've been in Darren's office having a conversation in the bell room, and he'll stop mid-sentence because we need to be in the hallway, because kids are moving, okay? And it happens in the hallway, relationships happen in the hallway, okay? And, and, and I'm still that way as a superintendent, okay? Bell rings, of course, I'm in an elevator, so the bell doesn't ring, but I know when kids are moving in the high school, that's all the way down the block, okay? But, but that's where, in the morning, I'm in the cafeteria where all our kids are. After school, I'm at the buses, as they load the buses in, I wave as the buses go by, and as soon as they go, I have a good exhale and say, job well done, okay? Another day done. And so there's an advantage of that in a smaller school, this, uh, you know, Plainview certainly is that, I know I can walk out of my office and be in a classroom in thirty seconds, uh, just to be around kids, to be visible by kids, so I like home. He cares about what's going on, and I think that means a lot to kids. Creepy at first. And I still get some of that at Ponte City, but, but they're seeing it, they get it, uh, and it's really, that, that, those relationships and building those relationships and knowing that you're making a connection with a kid is, I mean, that's why we're here, that's why we're, that's why I do it.
How valuable do you feel technology is in a school setting?
Okay, gotta have it, gotta, gotta be careful with it, Jason, but we, but, but you gotta have it. I've, I've been in schools where they just let technology replace the teacher, we cannot dehumanize our classrooms, okay? And, and I've seen that in, in one-to-one schools, we are a one-to-one school at Ponte City, uh, we were a one-to-one school at Lexington where I taught, can be very difficult, because all kids wanna do is open that lid, okay? And so, we have a huge responsibility as an administrative team to, to help our teachers know the proper way, time, and approach, you know, to use technology, but our kids have to be connected to the world. If, if, and we can't resist it, it's one thing, we, we can't stop it, uh, we just have to manage it, we have to manage it the right way. But I've, it, but it can be easy for teachers to use technology as a management tool, say, well, my, the kids won't misbehave if I just let them get on their phones, they won't misbehave, you know, they'll be engaged in something, and they'll be quiet, they won't be, you know, and I've seen that, so we have to be careful with that. But the most important thing is we have to make sure our teachers know, you know, the, the best way to use those technologies, but we can't, we just, you have to be careful that kids don't start to see the computer as replacing the teacher as a primary instructor.
Discuss a difficult personnel problem you've dealt with and how would you solve it?
Sort of working on it right now, really, because I'm gonna have to have some difficult conversations with, you know, some pairs, um, you know, pair, if, if I have to go to personnel, for example, our current budget situation for next year at Ponte City, I mean, I'm gonna look at pairs, but I'm looking at classified before we're gonna certify them. So that's gonna be, that's gonna challenge, probably. A word to that, what we're going to be doing. And then there's, there are just simple circumstances where folks need gentle reminders, okay? And, and that's, that's always the way I, I start with it, is, is a gentle face-to-face reminder, always giving the benefit of the doubt, if something's not getting done, hey, how can I help? Okay, is there some circumstance, maybe, that's, you know, kind of a barrier to, to what we need to get done? What, what, what do we need to do? Certainly had to have a lot of those conversations, had to dismiss teachers in the middle of the year, very difficult. Anytime you make decisions, they're gonna affect human beings and their families, uh, even if it's an easy decision, and to dismiss a teacher was an easy decision, uh, because, because he was very bad for kids, he was hurt for kids. It was an easy decision, but, but, but still, you know, gotta talk, because you know, and that, you feel bad that, that they, you know, went down that road. So, you know, I, I, I just always begin with, you know, gentle reminders, uh, and then if you, if you get to that point, which I, you know, I had to be a staff member, you know, this year, you can spell something out very clearly in writing, you know, that can be the next step, and just an acknowledgement that they understand, this is what has to happen, okay? These are the simple expectations, but that's not it, that, that would happen after we've had a couple of, of conversations, but you gotta talk to folks, and it can't be by, by email, you know, talk to folks face-to-face.
What first do you have writing grants or something?
Um, you know, not a whole lot, uh, you know, obviously, the Department of Ed provides quite a few grants, you know, portal, you know, through Title I and such, or those are kind of a, kind of a pain to do, it's where I gotta just sit and, you gotta plow through this, and you do it. Looking at some for, you know, playgrounds, where we're renovating our, our playgrounds, so a lot of times that doesn't come with it. Sometime, you gotta decide, okay, if I'm gonna spend, and, and grants can, can take up a little bit of your time to get it right, but, okay, what's gonna be the benefit? So, you know, not a whole lot, to be honest with you, and, you know, that's, that's just a, an area where I need to grow yet, uh, and study, uh, and finding out where to get the more bang for your money, for, for the use of your time.
Have you had any experience in building, remodeling, or additions and bombs?
Nope. I haven't. Be another great opportunity, another great opportunity to grow. And I know that, a, again, some of the biggest part of that, study, 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 is it necessary? It is, and now sell, now market it, now communicate with your, with your folks, okay? We're gonna be asking for some money, okay? And here's why, people don't mind as much, you know, paying to support their schools, if they, if they respect your school, if they trust your school, if they know that you're being good stewards of their tax dollars, okay? And it appears that you have been excellent stewards of taxpayers in this district. Levy's gone down forty cents in the past six years, okay? Spending's gone up by less than one percent per year in total dispersments, your tax asking has gone up by less than one percent per year. Valuations have been going up, and I know that's really possible, I understand, um, but you, as valuations have gone up, you've offset that, to be right, by lowering the levy, so, uh, it appears that you've been terrific stewards of taxpayers' money, but if you communicate with people, and you go in, you ask them, you explain very clearly, and you're available for them to ask questions, then you can successfully navigate that, do that difficult process of, we need some money for some capital projects.
What can that camera say to you?
Something on.
Yeah.
We live streaming right now?
No. I'll edit out all the good stuff, don't worry.
Okay, we'll turn the tables a little bit and ask if you have any questions, folks.
Well, aside from declining enrollment, I mean, what's, what's a primary issue that you need your superintendent to tackle? Uh, not on, not on tape one, uh, but in, in, in year one or year two, uh, I understand that declining enrollment is our biggest concern, and that's not at like a lot of schools that are similar in terms of, um, but what might that be if you were to give me marching orders for year one?
We've been looking lightly at our junior high classes, they're very small, mostly for boys, football, our junior high football children is very, yeah, yes, for next year. So that's a big thing we've been trying to do, certainly have, so far, got to know what it is. So that would be an immediate issue.
And, you know, I think, you know, Mike, some folks might think immediate issue is junior high football, okay? But I get it, you know, but it is, I mean, school activities are vital, they're vital for kids, they're, and football, whether you're necessarily winning or not, a lot of times is one of those marquee sports. Um, and, and it's, you have to give it every opportunity to be successful, you have to give those kids every opportunity to be able to participate. So, uh, so I, I recognize that junior high football is a, is a big deal. Um, and, you know, and, and I'm aware of conversations, folks, on e, on either end of, of Highway twenty, um, you know, and, and so what an opportunity that Plainview has to bring in a new face, a new voice, a new thought, to either reignite, restart, you know, that conversation, uh, you know, we don't, just need you, we need each other for the sake of our kids. And so hopefully, you know, your superintendent will, will be able to do that with our folks on Highway twenty.
I think I see a real need for school spirit in school, I mean, we, we just don't have it, you know, it's lacking.
Participation.
Participation, yes, there's activities, it's low, how's school spirit and support?
Yeah, if, if we don't get, if we, we, kids, we've gotta find some way to get them connected to something that the school provides, rather than just come here from eight, ten, three, forty, and it's, it's not unique to Plainview, uh, you know, so, so that can be tough, uh, spirit, morale, pride, um, there are, you know, things you can do, we're doing some of those things, we think, in Ponte City, and you have to be, you have to keep those things fresh, okay? So, so, yeah, we need to keep coming up with ideas to, for kids to, when they're not necessarily gonna acknowledge it, but, yeah, there's some fun things we're doing at school, I mean, you know, it's not math or science or English, you know, and that's a typical mentality of an adolescent, and, but, that school, by God, can be fun, okay? If I gotta come here today, I wanna have fun more at work. And, and so I, I try to project that, uh, you know, as much as I can, and that takes a little while for that culture to kind of become embedded. But then, yeah, there's just a, an expectation of, hey, wait a minute, kids, and I can be a good example of this, now I participated in things and everybody did these, you just did, um, you know, but, I mean, so I can speak to those things, kids, I'm not just making this up, uh, and I participated in things, but I didn't give to my school the, the way that I should or could have, and I, and I know that. And, you know, if we can, and we're not gonna get everybody to just buy and say, wow, I'm so inspired, you know, now that's your own thing, but, um, but that's the message, that has to be our mantra, and even though we could, we'll become discouraged along the way, and we can't give up. And even though we could, we'll become discouraged along the way, and we can't give up. Well, what, uh, what do you expect of me? I mean, as if you, whether it's me or anybody else, what do you expect of your superintendent?
I always say you be the boss and take care of situations and anticipate situations that might come up. That's very important. A really respectful dude, and he has some, but I know you, so I respect that a little bit. Appreciate your question. I mean, you can expect me to be a good leader. Make sure that everybody, also you are. What else do you have? Decision-making. So we need to research and make the decision.
I think that's something our community needs to be developed, because we don't have a lot of that right now. Just interacting with the community and with the kids themselves. Yeah, 'cause I don't know you, so I don't.
Yeah. I don't ask anybody from the eighties. Or worse, the seventies. And I, and I get it, in the, in the community, the superintendent in a town the size of Plainview is a community leader, where they want to be. And I was in Central City, and more so actually in Pawnee City, on the library board, we have a beautiful new library. We're building one here in town. I think that's amazing. I'm glad they got that. It's terrific. Progressive, supportive. Community. And that is amazing. So we've gotta be built, cool, and lively. We're doing what we need to do, I think, and there are probably more things, well, obviously, more things that need to be done. I, I would certainly have tremendous pride, not only in our school, but our community. So there are things that I see that, I'm a little OCD on some things, and so there are things that, that I've seen in our community. Maybe the park across the street, as I take my daughter over there, if we're here on a weekend. Okay, somebody needs to take care of this. Listening, you know? So, not trying to nitpick or tell anybody their job, okay? But we have to stay vibrant. We have to stay clean. We have to stay tidy. We have to stay progressive. And I know what's good for our community is gonna be even better for our school. I think that's all. What about hallway? Bell ring?
Bell ring.
But that would be a little creepy. I know.
And we need to turn it up, everybody, our, our level conversation, okay?
No problem.
Okay.
Do you have any ideas on how you can increase parent participation within the school and also attendance at school board meetings?
Food? Just, you know, when, when your environment is welcoming, I mean, that's not, I mean, so, you know, anything specific. We could do this specific thing or that. It's, it's tougher than it used to be. I understand that. It's tougher. You know, folks are, are generally busier. I mean, I was fortunate enough, you know, mom was a stay-at-home mom. And we used to, half of us, half the kids that went to school here when I did, mom was a stay-at-home mom. They were just more involved. I enjoyed that as a Catholic school principal. Folks tend to be more involved in their propereal education. And, and so it's, it's just, it's tougher. We have to make it as easy for them as we can. We can't come to them, though. So, just the, the amount of visibility that you have, the amount of communication that you have, that's, that can be a, you know, a challenging thing to expect from teachers. Stay in touch with home. Stay in touch with home. And stay in touch with home when your kids are doing the right thing. For years, I've required my teachers to send home one positive note a week, okay? With your lesson plans, I wanna see stapled to it a copy of the handwritten note you sent home to a parent whose child you caught doing something good. And we received just more positive response from that. And try to catch that rascal doing good, because when you have to call home to talk about the rascal behavior, it's a whole heck of a lot easier to have that conversation if they know you're fair. They contact me when my kid's doing good. They con, then I can take it when they have to contact me when my kids make a poor choice. Okay? So, just, and we have to initiate that conversation. I understand it needs to start with us, but we have to stay in touch with home as, as much as we can. And, and just send that message that, you know, this is, this is vital. This is important. You, you, we have to make them feel like, you know, I, I can't not communicate with school. I can't not be involved. All research shows us that we know that when home and school are working together, the kid's gonna benefit. And schools are losing that. It's tougher. Schools are losing that. So, you know, that's just a simple message that we need to continue to communicate. We need you, parents. We need you. We gotta have you working with us. And I think a lot of folks will appreciate that, that they're part of the team, they're part of the conversation. School isn't just something that's done to their kid. They, they need to be part of it. And mom and dad, if you're not part of it, it's not good for your kid. It's not what's best for it. And we know that's what you want. So, you know, just that, that constant communication, okay, and that expectation, okay? We will see you here for parent-teacher conferences. I send out a, a note for, for parent-teacher conference, send out the school reach, the all-call. Hey, parent-teacher conferences are four-thirty to eight on Thursday. We'll see you then. And bring your child. They need to be part of the conversation. We're talking about them. They should be part of that conversation about them, okay? 'Cause also, if you have to have that difficult conversation, you know, they can't say, well, that's not what he told me. Well, I'll have to go home and ask him. Well, you know, and then you get no. So, it's just, you know, an expectation. We expect you to be involved. Take some time to develop. Take some time to develop that.
What do you consider to be the greatest contributions to the schools and districts you've worked in? In light of that, what do you feel you can bring to our district? I know you've answered some of these.
Positive energy.
Positive.
Positive energy. You know, enthusiasm, and, you know, can-do spirit. You know, th- these are tough things that need to be done, but they will be done, okay? We'll do them together. Not letting kids off the hook, off the hook. Not accepting mediocrity, okay? And that, that comes from my, my days in the military. Mediocrity is, is unacceptable, okay? That's what I gave you when I was here as a student. I gave you mediocrity. That, that was good enough for me, okay? Mr. Green remembers that well, I'm sure, from the science class, okay? And, and that's been unacceptable to me in who I am and what I need to accomplish and do in my profession and in my personal life. And that's what I expect in the schools that I lead. Positive energy and an intolerance for mediocrity.
If you had to cut the budget, what avenues would you take?
Well, you gotta, gotta look line to line. Look at trends, okay? So is there anything that's jumped significantly, okay? If we look the past five or 10 years, anything that's maybe jumped more than five percent a year, okay? Identify what, why. Is there a reason? If it's, yeah, um, so you, you, you gotta start looking line to line, and that's gonna take some time. It's not that complicated to do. You can pull your AFRs real easy and, and create a spreadsheet. That's what I spent about the past, you know, I spent a lot of hours at Pawnee City doing the past couple of weeks, just trying to learn, okay, what, you know, what's been happening. It's not as important to focus on how did we get here. It's more important that what do we need to do moving forward, but you have to look at that. And as I said earlier, I mean, anything away from kids feeling it. There are things that you can do that ki- kids aren't even gonna know, okay? When you have to start looking at personnel, that they're gonna recognize. And a lot of times folks think you gotta go, well, we can, we can either do it really tough, and we can take a little here and here and here and here and here, or one certified position and we've got us where we need to be. That's the easy decision, okay? But it's not the right decision. So that takes some time, and I know that that's your, you know, one of your biggest expectations of me, is being able to manage that, keep us within our means, okay, make the tough decisions about where, uh, where do we need to find some disbursements that can either wait, you know, can a track resurfacing wait a year, for example? I mean, the folks at Pawnee City, I'm sorry, the track resurface is gonna wait another year. It just has to, because that's an expensive one that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll hope and expect for a better fiscal outlook next year. But that's a, that's a tough thing, but everything, anything we can do in the periphery of, of our, of our target. Start there and expect teachers to help identify those things, okay? Part of the solution.
What do you consider to be your greatest contributions to the schools and districts you have worked in? And in light of that, what do you feel you can bring to our district?
I think you did that one.
Connect that one.
We need to, how do you find yourself?
Oh, sorry.
It's a good one.
I think that Jim had that one, so we're down number four.
How do you feel yourself getting involved with the community other than school?
Well, I mean, I, just what I've done in, in, in other communities in which I've lived. I'm, I'm a member of the American Legion. I was in Central City. I am in Pawnee City. I've been heavily involved in teammates mentoring program. Now, that's a school-based mentoring program, obviously, and I know that we have that here. It's not a school program per se. It's more of a community program. Even though it's school-based, I get it. I was, I was president of our chapter in Central City. We're starting a chapter in Pawnee City. So been involved in that. I'm on the library board in Pawnee City. They made me vice president 'cause I missed a meeting. So, I, I, and, you know, Dave, you just, you, you just do it. You just, I mean, I, I, I don't have a, this would be the process I would use to get involved in the community. You just do it. Yeah, I mean, these are things I'm involved in. These, I know that a strong connection with our library is great for our kids. It's gonna be great for our teachers and great for our kids, for crying out loud, they can walk down the street and access that resource. During school, I don't have a problem with that, okay? You know, possibly. I mean, uh, so, and I need to help facilitate that. I know that my involvement in that is, is, you know, is very important. So, you know, I, I, I don't have a strategy to get involved in the community. You just, you just do it. Because I know what's good for our school, and it's natural for me. It's not something that I think, well, I, I have to do this as part of a job. Well, I, I, I want to do that and I expect to do that.
What are your thoughts on early childhood development?
Very important. I think for a lot of kids, certainly those that come from poverty homes, the sooner we can get them on our campus and in our classroom with our teachers who are trained for kids at that developmental level, the better. We've got a, a preschool in, in Pawnee City. Things have changed dramatically in education, particularly kindergarten. Kindergarten's probably changed more than any grade level of the past generation or two than any other. Kindergarten is now rigorous. You would never use the term rigor to define kindergarten a generation ago, okay? But now it's rigorous. You used to just turn five and you went. It was just the natural thing to do. And you went half-day, and that was just what you did. But, yeah, things have evolved. Things have changed expectations and so on. So now kids need to be ready for kindergarten. And, and more and more families struggle on their own, I believe, to have their child ready for the rigors of kindergarten. Used to be five and you go, now it's six and you go. Well, we just keep them home another year, and when they're six, they'll be ready. Well, they might be ready physically, maybe emotionally, not cognitively. If that parent doesn't read to that child every day, and has been since the day they were born, that's not reality. That doesn't happen. I understand that. The sooner we can get kids in our structured setting, okay? And help them with their social, emotional, cognitive, aesthetic development. And we've got trained folks that know and understand and can help identify, because there's gonna be a pretty wide gap. Some kids are gonna be pretty darn smart at age four. Some kids don't know what a book is at age four, okay? And, you know, so we have to find a way. And I think sometimes those kid, we need, we need interventions here. We need, you know, encouragement and acceleration here. So that, that preschool and kindergarten levels and those teachers are pretty vital, pretty significant, pretty important. Understand with preschool and junior kindergarten, I understand the concept of, of junior kindergarten. Don't know for sure how we, you know, run it here, but I certainly support the idea of making sure kids are ready for kindergarten, rather than that old enough, they gotta go. We're setting them up for, to, to not be successful, to maybe, they don't like school because it's too hard. They can't read. They can't make those connections. They can't blend, because it's pretty much about reading and being able now to work as a group, okay, and, and how to, you know, get along with peers, 'cause a lot of them may be grown up and not been in that environment. So we have a responsibility to make sure that they're ready. And if that means we have to have a couple of different sections, or we have to have targeted interventions for a group, then, then I believe that's what we can do, and that's what I would support. Is it, does, is it gonna cost a little extra more money? That's our best investment we can make.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions up in the community?
No, I think we've kind of discussed them. I certainly would ask you about your expectations for me and my involvement in the community, and I think we've discussed that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, staff members, can you go?
Well, good thing we have a lot of questions, 'cause several of them have been answered, but I, I think we, I think we can still ask you a few there. Good. First question. The board issued you a directive, but you disagree with it. What would you do? How would you handle the situation? And how would you discuss it with others?
Well, and I, and I, I expect that that, you know, that can certainly happen. Ultimately, the board is, is the boss, is my boss. I, I think, I hope that that would be pretty rare, that I would be able to communicate with the board, you know, what I believe is the best decision and what I think maybe needs to have happened. If I'm not successful in doing that, whoever it's gonna affect, those folks need to hear directly from me. Again, an unpleasant certainty is better than an uncertainty. It's easier to accept than a, than a, than an uncertainty. And most important, though, would be, you know, the image that, you know, we, we are speaking as one. You know, even though there might be, we speak as one board. And if they say, Darren, this is something that needs to happen, and I don't agree with it, I think we would probably, I, I would explain, you know, privately to the board and try to convince them otherwise. If they feel strongly about it, that's what we'll do. I'll support it. And I'll certainly communicate and project a positive response and a positive attitude about it. I know that would be the quickest ticket out of here if I were to ever undermine the boss, the bosses. But communicating with faculty, I know, 'cause they're the ones who are generally, they carry out the mission of the school. Faculty carries out the mission of the school. It's kind of determined or decided in the end by this group. But then we expect our faculty to carry that out. But they need to be part of what we build. You know, and, and I understand that. So again, it, it comes down to communication, honesty, and, and trust. That take, can take a little bit of time to build, but communication will certainly go a long way to help accomplish that.
Okay, you, someone answered this question before. How do you communicate most effectively with your staff and faculty? Describe the process you use to give the staff informative school issues.
Okay, visibility, again. Dean, I think, you know, a lot of conversation can just happen in the hallway. I don't think we need to have faculty meeting every Friday morning at seven-thirty to talk about issues. I have used in the past optional faculty meeting the morning after a board meeting, okay? I'll be in the media center at seven. okay, I'll be in the media center at seven-thirty, the day after every board meeting, I'll just, I'll come in here and I'll probably do some work, and if any faculty members come in, because I don't expect faculty members to go to a board meeting. But certainly, some decisions are probably made that directly affect the faculty, don't want you to hear about that on the street, because somebody's gonna screw it up, and you're gonna get some misinformation, so here I am, I'm available the day after a board meeting, for any faculty to come in and say, okay, is there anything we need to know? Okay, a lot of the decisions that are made at a board meeting are just, are just other stuff that you don't necessarily need to worry about for, you know, your, your content area, but, so, so I'm, I'm available, you know, and I'm, and I'm around. But that's one strategy that I've used to communicate with faculty, certainly about the activities and the decisions that are happening at the school board.
Okay, and my last question, well, first of all, I'm gonna make a statement here, and then I'll get to my question. When you were the principal at Central City, you went to the O'Neill Little Kids District Wrestling Tournament, not as a coach, and you were high-fiving the kids when they walked off the mat, Darren, I, I was blown away by that, I'll be honest with you. And, because I have hundreds, if not thousands, of connections around the state from growing up in Western Nebraska to coaching down on this end, all the coaches around, of course, I did checking on you, because I know you as wrestling person, I don't know you as an administrator person, so when I was at the state tournament, I did a lot checking on you and all the candidates, and the, the theme kept coming up, I, I talked to past students that you had, and teachers, coaches slash coaches that you had, and the word positive kept coming up, okay? So, if you, and I imagine that's probably gonna go into my questionnaire, it says, how would you characterize your relationship with employees, groups, and other groups advocating on behalf of the employees in your present position, and what if, and what, if anything, would you change in that, in those relationships?
Well, I can't answer it any better than you did, Dean. I would, yeah, I mean, I, that's just who, that's just who I am, I mean, I don't have to say, okay, I've gotta be positive, I mean, and I get that from kids, I mean, I get that, you know, when I show up at school in the morning, I mean, my, my, the energy level goes up as the kids come in, and, you know, I'm excited, I like them, I, I love to see students perform to their potential, that's a, you know, a bit of a mantra that I've used, is just be the best you can be, okay, it's what, it's why I joined the Army, I mean, that mantra, that military mantra, you know, advertisement back in the day just really, really worked for them, okay, just be the best you can be, use your talents and skills to the best of your abilities, so, certainly, you know, you know, positivity is just who I'm about, you know, seeing kids that, you know, be excited, and I know that does it for teachers too. This business, you know, can be so tough, and it can be discouraging, and, and that's the toughest job for administrators, toughest job for administrators, even superintendent, isn't, isn't curriculum, or, or assessment, or even the budget, it's, it's helping teachers to not get discouraged, because once teachers get discouraged, and there can be a variety of reasons for that, everything starts to break down, okay, and what happens in the classroom is what we're all about, and if that starts to break down, we're in trouble, okay, because that'll come down to kids, and so, positivity, I guess, is, is, is just who I am, I, and, and now, I'm rambling a little bit, so I'm not addressing the second part of your question, so Dean, would you please share that with me?
The second part is, what if, or what, if anything, would you change in these relationships that you've had with your faculty?
Yeah, I, I, gosh, I don't wanna presume that I've, I've got it down. I, I have such high expectations for kids, when they let me down, it hurts. And I get frustrated too, and, and on any given day, if everything's aligned right, and I get frustrated, a kid makes a poor choice, hurts somebody, okay, or is, or is mean to one of my teachers, and that's the way I talk about it with kids, don't be mean to my teachers, you know, when they're disrespectful, I say, you're being mean to my teachers, okay, and that, you know, that irritates me, okay, so, when I get frustrated with kids, I mean, it's, you know, I, I know that I've damaged my relationships with kids because I've not handled it the right way, and I've, and I, you know, so when I scold kids, and I do, I try to do it without emotion, but I also want them to know, doggone it, you know, that, that hurts me, that upsets me, okay, and then, many times, I'll find my way back to that kid and say, you know what, I handled that wrong, I handled that wrong, still disappointed, you're better than that. You know, so, being in charge of my emotions is, is, you know, can sometimes exude a passion for what I expect, but the wrong kid, you, you can, you can shut him off and lose him if they feel, boy, he's got chewed out by the principal, or worse yet, superintendent, it's not the superintendent it's supposed to be about, okay, but I, I, I can't ignore certain things. So that would be something I would, Dean, that I would wanna make sure, just, you know, again, as I make sure, you know, think, get your motions in check, okay, now have that difficult conversation.
Darren, you've kind of answered this, but I'm gonna ask again, and you might wanna elaborate just a little bit, but what role does a superintendent have in enlisting parents as partners in the education of their children?
Visibility, Robin, it would, it would just keep coming back to that, it would keep coming back to that, they know me, they've talked to me, we've established a relationship, they trust me, they feel welcome, so they show up, we're never gonna get to a hundred percent, but by gosh, we, we, we want more than what we have now, okay, and then if, when those folks go back out into the community, and they talk at the coffee shop, or the grocery store, or the Subway, or Casey's, and they talk about a positive interaction they had at school, a positive experience they had at school, that's, that's, that's the best we can do, I mean, that, now we're, we're, we're really getting to what we hope we can accomplish, is have people be talking positively about our school, because then, then they're gonna, they're gonna show up when they can and should, in greater numbers than they do, if they're frustrated with us, they don't wanna be around us. And so, we just, we need to prevent that in, in, in every obstacle that we can, is to prevent frustration with our school from our community. And I, you know, I've talked a lot about how I think we can do that, visibility, positivity, communication, welcoming environment, and then they'll tell our story out in the community.
In your view of education, can you discuss the balance between curricular and extracurricular classes, and then what does the role of extracurricular activities play in the overall scale?
Yep, well, activities are the other half of education, I mean, I don't see it as, this is the extra stuff that we do if we have time or if we have money, okay, because we've, we've gotta recognize that it's the reason half the kids come here, so, once we acknowledge that, we're okay, now, it doesn't mean they get to come in and call the shots, say, I'm only showing up because there's game tonight, or meat, or whatever, we, we, we know that, for some of them, okay, all right, while you're here, we're gonna hit you with math and science and English and positivity and expectations, okay, if that's what gets them in the door, let's acknowledge that, let's don't be frustrated because we know you're only here because of, you know, the one act, that's fine, I mean, we're not gonna change their mindset on that, so it's the other half of education, and, and, the more successful we are at connecting kids to school in any other way, through activities, whether it's sports, or whether it's performing arts, whether it's FFA, it doesn't matter, a kid comes to us, we started a chess club in Pawnee City, we got a group of kids, and they're just over here in the corner all the time, neat kids, but they're just this little pot of kids, and one of them said, hey, Mr. Al, chess? I said, I know the perfect guy for it, newspaper editor, is a chess guru, does chess tournaments in surrounding states, so I called up Ray every Friday now, I spent fifty bucks on some cheap chess boards and pieces, and, and we got this group, and they call themselves, you know, Chess Club, I don't know if they're technically a club, but they have an opportunity to stay after school for an hour, hour and a half, which is probably better than where they would maybe go and do, you know, and they're doing some chess, I mean, so, they're connected to something. So, activities, extracurricular, co-curricular, it's not ninety of one and ten percent of the other, I mean, it's, it's about fifty-fifty, and we need to acknowledge that and recognize that and support that.
And then, of course, since I teach science, I just have to throw a little shoo curriculum in.
I'm a big fan of science.
We got a lot of discussions to be talked. What is your opinion or position on the NISA, NISA testing as it is now?
Yep.
And your thoughts about going to MAPS testing in the future Nebraska talk about accountability?
Well, I know we do both, yep, I know we do both, and I know we have to do both, we can't supplant one with the other, I think the eleventh grade at NISA is gonna be supplanted by ACT, I think that, that bill's gonna make through the unicameral, and that's probably okay, I mean, that's brought with some other concerns or issues, but, I think NISA is, you hate to say it's here to stay, I think they said that about Stars, but, now that we're, you know, six years going into year seven of NISA, I see the value in the data that we get from NISA. And I've seen our scores incrementally grow, you know, every year, you know, for the most part, and so, I mean, it's achieved, the problem with NISA is, it's a, it's a mastery-based assessment, rather than a growth-based assessment. Of course, that's changed with the reauthorization of, of ESEA, and so, we're still doing NISA, but now we're gonna focus on growth instead of mastery, okay, and I think that's a good thing, I think it takes a, I mean, not think, that is a good thing, takes a little bit of the burden off of your teachers, certainly, so I think, I think NISA's appropriate. Do we test our kids too much, I mean, the, the conventional wisdom is, yes, of course we do, it's not the testing that we do, it's the data we look at, and the decisions we make in our classroom based on that data, MAPS is good, my experience with MAPS, though, is it gives us a bunch of data, and then we just set it over here, and nothing happens as a result of it, we did our MAPS testing, and therefore, we met the state requirement, what are we doing with it? And so, that's a responsibility of the administrative team, to sell our teachers, to help our teachers to be interested in data, make it as simple as you can, because it will spit out tremendous amount of reports, and, and, and in a language that, well, okay, if it's complicated, I mean, I, you're too busy to look at spreadsheets and spreadsheets and spreadsheets, so administrative team has a responsibility really to filter that and say, here's really what you need to know, here's the most important piece of information that comes from NISA, or comes from MAPS, okay, and this is what it's showing us, we need to focus on maybe this little piece of curriculum, this standard, a little more, whatever, so both are valuable, both are useful, if it's done well, if it's done efficiently, then you don't feel like, how we're doing is tested, you know, especially in the month of April, I know NISA season's coming up. So I, I see the value in it, I'm not somebody who says, we gotta just, let me just get rid of this NISA now, people, I, I think mistakenly thought NISA was going away when NCLB was, was replaced in, in December, but it's not, because you get rid of NISA, we'll get something new, something else will come, we're not at the point in NISA where we get it, or we should, and I think it's a viable tool, and in MAPS as well, I think we can do it.
Okay, how do you lead staff and create a positive, like, staff morale?
Well, you know, I still consider myself to be first and foremost a teacher, you know, I, I miss teaching, you'll find people everywhere I've been, you know, currently, you know, even now in Pawnee City, you know, I, I miss that experience, the classroom, and that's why, you know, I'm as visible as I am in the classroom, so I mean, it took a little, you know, I, I shared that with the folks down there when I went to visit, and the faculty, maybe last year at this time said, well, really, you know, your superintendent's gonna be in the classroom? And they, they, they get it now, because I am, and again, I'm just there basically to stay connected to kids, mainly, I'm not there to, okay, are we doing the right things in here, that's not so much my job as it is the principal's, okay, how's the curriculum, the lesson plan, the standards, and all that, out of the business, you know, so, I, you know, I, I miss being a teacher, and I still consider myself to be a teacher, couldn't be here, wouldn't be at this position if I hadn't been there, and so, again, I recognize that, when done well, when done right, it's the toughest job in the world, but also, you know, the most rewarding, and you guys feel that, you know, when you just nailed it on any given day, on most days, you know, when, when, for whatever reason, boy, the kids were excited, the kids were positive, the kids were engaged, the kids were appreciative, maybe. You're, you're, it's a combination of you're exhausted because you work so hard every, all day long, and the, the energy that you need all day, every day in front of kids, okay, but you, you, you get back more, so you're exhausted, but you're exhilarated simultaneously, you know, that's awesome, that's awesome, and I, I miss that, I still get that, you know, some, even as a superintendent. But I, you know, I, I, I envy what you get to do with kids, because I don't, I don't get to do that anymore, at your level.
I think you get that. Okay, what do you see as the most important role of the superintendent as it pertains to the faculty and the staff?
I mentioned earlier, the most important role is to keep teachers from getting discouraged. Frustrated is one thing, everybody's frustrated, discouraged is, I don't wanna do this anymore, discouraged is giving up, and you can't fake your way when you're discouraged, it's gonna be evident, okay, and I do tell teachers, I mean, you need to, and I share, this is a principle, you know, if you, if, you faking it is okay, as long as nobody can tell, faking that you're excited, that you're happy, that you're, is okay, as long as kids can't tell, discouraged, they can tell, and so, we have a huge responsibility as a board and as an administrative team, because kids will let us down, when we have the expectations that we need to have and should have for kids, there's gonna be a lot of them that aren't gonna meet it, and a lot of them that aren't gonna meet it because they don't care, and so, they're not gonna fulfill even the simplest of expectations that we have for them, it's frustrating, I get it, but the discouragement is one thing, and I share with teachers, I don't want, I, I, you know, I better not be able to pick up on it, go home and be discouraged, don't go to Casey's and be discouraged, don't go to Subway, if you go home and be discouraged, you're human beings, go home and be discouraged, but doggone it, don't you dare bring that into school, because it will be a cancer, okay, kids will see it, they'll sense it, they'll feel it, and then they'll use that as an excuse to do even less for you, okay, so it's tough, and as pros, though, that's what I, that's what I expect. Frustration is okay, disappointment is okay, and kids need to know that they let us down, especially if we have that relationship with them, they don't wanna let you down, if we can establish that relationship with them, okay?
Okay, how do you go about implementing the needed change, such as, like, the declining enrollment, uh, excuse me, declining enrollment, co-oping in, like, there's some changes coming down?
Yeah, well, I'm curious, we, we, well, and I know we've got a, there's about seventy students, I, I didn't check the enrollment at the mobile school here in town, but there's about seventy students in our district, seventy more students in our district that, that don't attend here, okay, so I, I don't know if the enrollment is there, I know that a lot of students in our district don't attend here because they attend the proctor's. You know, enrollment is something that you just don't have a, a direct, okay, if we do this enrollment, we'll go, if we do this enrollment, we'll see, you know, more kids come to school here. You know, I think there are, there are gonna kids that are gonna be on the periphery, we benefit tremendously in Pawnee City from an op, net option enrollment, you know, for a variety of reasons, none of which I had anything to do with, but if we are portrayed and viewed as a positive, vibrant, progressive school district, people that have opportunities and options might say, that's maybe where I want my kids to go, if our community is attractive, when people come to it, they might say, maybe I'm gonna bring my family there, okay, that's, that's absolutely huge, and that's something that I see in communities that I'm in, like, you just, you just do, we, and, and it is absolutely vital for our community leaders to do whatever we can do to make sure that our community stays clean, positive, vibrant, I see a lot of that, I think there's more that we can do as a community, because the school's the heartbeat of the community, and people are, don't wanna trust, entrust their children to a school district if they don't believe it's the best option out there, if they, if they do have options, but it just has to be a, you know, a culture that we build, you know, over the course of time, and that happens by everybody communicating the same positive expectations, progressive, I know we're losing kids, can you be progressive when your, when enrollment's declining, okay, not if you're looking at that one statistic, okay, but, there, there's more to us, you know, than, than just that one statistic. Okay, but there's more to us, you know, than just that one statistic. So again, it comes down to communication and positivity and high expectations. And we're going to be here, and we're going to move forward, and we're going to do dynamic things. You know, and we're going to grow in many ways every year.
Darren, in any capacity, as that you hold, like, a teacher administrator, what sort of unique, creative, out-of-the-box type of idea did you implement that saw results?
Um, I know that, you know, for kids, they're kind of immediate gratification, you know, kind of, kind of kids. So if we said, "Well, we've got this strategic plan," you know, that can be a tough thing to sell for kids. My, my primary focus tends to default to kids. And what can we do to help kids have a positive attitude about school? For them to want to come to school and to put some effort into meeting our expectations, as opposed to, "I just have to be here. I have to do this stuff." So whether I was at, you know, at St. Francis, or Central City, or Pawnee City, just trying to surround our kids with positivity and, you know, and things that are encouraging. The, how the plant, how campus looks and smells is vital to me, and even sounds. At Central City, one morning I came into work about 7:00 o'clock, and it's just quiet and kind of half dark, and they're like, "I don't even want to come to this place." We need to liven this place up. So I started playing, you know, music in the hallways in the morning. So as teachers came in, as students came in, there's music. There's music playing. I mean, so it's, this place is alive. Because, you know, that's, they're already kind of tired or dragging or whatever, and if they come in a place that's kind of, kind of dark and quiet, I don't want to be here, you know. So just, you know, some simple things like that. You know, just like what we're doing with the black shirts in Pawnee City. Again, those are simple, they're inexpensive, but you can get some, an immediate spark, you know, from kids and an immediate little bit of enthusiasm. Have to be careful that, you know, you sustain that, because a lot of times you can just, a lot of fits and starts. Ooh, this, ooh, that, you know, ooh, that, you know, and, well, I thought that was important. Now we forgot all about it. Worked with a group of faculty members I met with at Pawnee City in our first couple of weeks of school. I just said, "Anybody that wants to get together and talk about different ideas, different things we can do, as kind of a praise or a reward or whatever, kind of, you know, encouragement for kids, let's get together." So we brainstormed, and this was, you know, we came up with a whole lot of ideas. Can't do it all, folks. Took kids bowling in Tecumseh. You know, a group of kids that had met certain expectations, we went bowling. Superintendent went bowling. Okay, got to teach kids how to keep score, because Tecumseh's old school, just a sheet of paper and a pencil. Nothing electronic. So, "Hey, Mr. All, how do you keep score?" So I taught them how to keep score, and I won. And that was good. Took a picture with Corey Kettlehake, senior best athlete in school. Took a picture with him and me with the sheet, posted it in the school. You know, I don't know, just, you know, some of those things. What to, you know, the state prisons down there, for example, you know, Tecumseh State Prison. Take, take kids to go on a little tour of the prison, you know, not a scared straight kind of thing, but by God, superintendent's going. Own experience this way. So, you know, just, you know, some of those things. We hope they, you know, okay, school's not such a drag. School's not such a drag. Every now and then we get to do this, that, or the other thing. But most of the time, yeah, we got to do math and science and English, and show up when we're supposed to show up, and follow the rules and so on. But they get it and they appreciate it, as long as every now and then, try to have some fun.
Good. What is the one thing you learned from each step in your career that you think has helped you become the type of superintendent that our school needs?
That's an awesome question. Humility, you know, is, has been very important. I mean, I still am, I'm pretty, I'm still pretty confident. But humility, hard work, I mean, I recognize it, and again, the military, probably the best decision that I ever made, but how hard work pays off. Okay, I, you know, internal intrinsic motivation is much more important than extrinsic motivation, because I'm in charge of me then, and I can't blame somebody else because of, you know, a lot of papers. You know, we used to get donuts every Friday, and now we don't. You know, just, I'm not so much into that. I know you need to do that. I know you need to appreciate kids and appreciate teachers, and you need to show that in concrete ways from time to time. I don't need those things. I might like a nice paycheck. That would help. But intrinsic motivation is something that I've learned along the way, lifelong learning. Schools are our centers of learning, and I believe the leaders of schools should model that. Certainly, the superintendent should model that. A lot of times you become a superintendent and you're done, you're done going to school. I'm still going to school, and I enjoy telling students that at Pawnee City. I still have homework. When kids don't do their homework, I got homework. You want to see my homework? I still have a teacher who has expectations of me. I still have to go to a classroom and sit in Vermillion, in a classroom at USD, all day on a Saturday, and learn about statistics. Okay, and that's, you know, and that's no fun, but it's part of a goal that I've set for myself, and that's, this is one of the hurdles, one of the steps, to get to this goal that I have. And if I can write about 30 more pages of a dissertation on the 7th of May, I'll earn a doctorate degree from USD. And I hope that that will communicate to our stakeholders, that I walk the talk.
Okay, one more question from me, other than, how did Judy feel about you joining the Army? Motivating others to follow your lead, especially in the face of resistance is a key.
I'm sorry, say again.
Okay. The Army question of the
She was okay. Aaron had went in the Army.
Motivating others to follow your lead, especially in the face of resistance is a key leadership trait. Describe a situation in which you motivated others to follow your lead in the face of resistance, and how did you accomplish that?
Gosh, a specific instance. I, you know, I don't know, I just, I just am who I am, and I just go about my business. I go about the way that I, what I believe is best for kids the way I do. I'm probably in the middle of that right now. I had a second grade teacher and a fifth grade teacher that just resigned, took early retirement from Pawnee City. They'd worked 37 and 38 consecutive years at Pawnee City next to each other, and they both took early retirement. So we're losing 75 years of experience, and I have a second and a fifth grade position to, teacher to replace. My board has said, "Darren, you're going to have to consider only replacing one of them and reassigning your sixth grade teacher and absorbing your sixth grade into a junior high setting." It's very reasonable for them to ask me to do that. I don't want to do that. I don't think that's what's best for kids. To put sixth grade into a junior high setting and have the bell ring and have them to go eight periods a day. So I don't know that resist is the right word. I don't know that I'm going to resist my board. I am certainly going to try to convince them that I, allow me to do what's best for kids. And they'll say, "Well, okay, then you find another way to manage this 41% reduction in staff." Okay, so that's what I'm doing right now, is looking everywhere that I can do so that I can save that teacher, save that position, so I can replace them both rather than replace one. Attrition is a much easier way to reduce staff. And we have that opportunity. However, elementary, I'm a little, I'm a little partial to elementary, because I know that we're kind of, you know, the foundational skills that we need to develop, I don't want to mess with the elementary. I see areas in high school, and I sure wish a couple of particular teachers would find a great career opportunity elsewhere. Okay, and then it would still be a tough decision. We'd have to absorb that, but by gosh, we could make it work. So I'm, I'm, I'll tell you in a month how, how well I, how successful I was at convincing our board to allow me to hire two teachers instead of one, because that's where I'm at right now. So that's, that's what I'm, that's my primary focus right now in my job at Pawnee City. Finding the fiscal, making the right fiscal decisions to be able to retain both of those positions. Expectations of me?
I've taught here 21 years, and I've had the superintendent in my room a couple of times. It wouldn't be bad to have somebody that's able, body enough to walk up the stairs to talk to you occasionally. Get to know you a little bit.
We put you up in the junior high building?
I, I enjoy being there.
Yeah.
I used to teach, I used to teach junior high, so that's kind of why I started there. And, you know, now I just kind of like it there now. But, you know, just, I like, you know, being a person, not just somebody that I have to negotiate with every few years. That's what I, I'm one of the negotiators too, so, you know, kind of being a, being a good person type of thing.
Okay, I understand.
Basically a partner with us.
Yep, I get it. We need to be a team.
Just so you know, I love data too.
I never said I loved this.
They all love data.
They all love data. We love, they can't wait for data retreats. They just begging, begging.
Data retreats.
Right here.
We really enjoy Mrs. Mowbicki coming in our rooms so much to visit for a variety of topics, whatever it is. But it would be nice to have another administrator visit through our rooms as well.
Very interesting what goes on there, because I know that there's where our mission is, is being carried out.
And I like the positive role that you assume that you exude.
Well, mainly it's because we got to have fun.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's huge, that's what's up.
Hey, I think we're already doing it.
I'm done answering questions, though.
Just, I'm glad you didn't let Patty ask any questions. But we're, it's off the record, though.
And then after that, and go take you around town. Show you some of the, the sale things.